God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, dear Lord God, it's once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to thank you for your dear son, our long and savior Jesus Christ, and for all of your many blessings you bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. Dear Lord God, blessed that you continuously bless our mayor folks here, our city council, our city attorney, our city manager, and department heads on tonight as we gather together to make the decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And we pray that in everything that we do, we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Bitch, you call me. All right, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I make the motion.
Second.
I said.
All those in favor? Approval of the minutes for April 12th, is that a meeting?
I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Second?
All those in favor?
Glenn, I'll turn it over to you.
We, since we've had a general election and they voted for the all three have been completed, it is by law that you have to elect a mayor pro temp at that time for the two or two years. So at this point in time, the election is forward, bring the nomination of mayor pro temp.
I'm not gonna watch you.
I second you. Any more nominations? No further nominations, forward, close.
Then you have to vote.
On that nomination. All in favor of Dr. Paul serving as the mayor pro temp for the next two years? Show hands. Any opposed? You didn't vote?
Well, I don't know that I could have. I'm glad to do it.
All right.
Well, um, thank you, thank you. Um, I thought it was a bit presumptuous to prepare a mayor pro temp report, but I will give you some idea, a little bit of what I've been doing. Spoke at Lions Club about two or three weeks ago and had a good response. We really have a, the city's running well and I'm not taking credit for it. We've got a great council, but we're in a pretty good, pretty good place. We've got some issues, we've got some growth issues, some things we need to do, but financially, I think we're in a pretty good place to fulfill those obligations to our citizens. I spoke briefly at the downtown festival, which I was pleasantly surprised at the turnout of that. I had, I had some things that I had to tend to out of town that day and I couldn't stay very long, but I understand that if, you know, more people, we had bad weather and there was just a lot of issues there, but it turned out okay. We didn't see a big spike in COVID. COVID numbers look good right now. I don't know what percentage of people we have in Dillon that are vaccinated, but I know probably seventy-eight percent of people I speak to in my office have been vaccinated. So we see a new bear from zero to two cases a day and we're still holding at seventy-seven deaths. That percentage is probably within reason. We're a low such economic area. We're an area that has a lot of elderly people. So our number, our percentage of dead on that's probably gonna be a little bit higher. Also spoke at the hospital, at the nurses appreciation. Spoke to them on last Thursday. It was our appreciation week. And I didn't know whether I wanted to speak to them as a mayor pro temp or if it's just the older stock at the hospital and I had to ask that when I gave my talk. But anyway, trying to do my best to represent the city in a good manner. Glenn?
I would follow up with on my COVID. Since January, I think, or the first of February, we've been hosting a site for vaccines either through DHA or through cloud here locally. I don't know if the cloud is having more skid around here on the top of my head, but I do know that the DHA is getting to be out here either this winter, next week, and then at least two more times in June. One of those in June is gonna be in afternoon heat and type deal to see if it attracts more people. The last one DHA had here last week, it was a small turnout.
Yeah.
Very small.
Well, they're showing up in other areas, you know, I mean, they're showing up at drug stores, on the amount.
It is, it's a, we've got a lot now, that is true. That is the state of Dillon.
And that's a good sign.
Yeah, a few were shelved off. And most of what we've seen with DHA when they're here is mostly to have a talent. Comparing with what the cloud does, it's more of a local flavor of people that show up. But I'm assuming Betsy's got those dates, also as she should, it's on her table and try to put it on our Facebook page. Following up with festival, the weather was not the best, probably the worst one we've ever had that I've had associated with. But we had a good turnout of people, vendors. From the vendor's point of view, wasn't as many as they hoped for, which we had cut some due to COVID, but with the winds and the forecast of rain that day, some of those folks didn't show up. There were two or three vendors that stayed busy from the time they got there until it was completely gone off that night. Turquoise and funk cakes are big sales. If you want to go into feds, there's two things that the duty sales pick up, line up, did them out of what level? They were lined up, turquoise and pink. But I think everyone had a great time in the vein that we had, moved in, out to the wellness center and had good crowd, probably about two hundred people give or take during that time. I'll let, I see that Red and Stephanie's here, they can speak on this one, citizen report, but they had their first event Friday night, I think it's called the first Friday event. They had a good turnout for there, so the weather wasn't bad, it was a good thing that they did. Last month, we talked about the, or I spoke about the American Rescue Plan, and that's the money that feds are gonna give to states, states in turn, turn it over to counties and municipalities within their state. And I misspoke last week, I said it was based on seventy-five percent of your previous budget from the previous year. That's not correct. The funds are based on population, however, the funds cannot total no more than seventy-five percent of what your budget was prior to that pandemic. So that's, I think ours is two point six, two point three six or two point six three million dollars we're supposed to get supposedly sometime this month, not all at one time, but I think fifty percent of that is due to come in this month. I just got an update prior to the meeting, through the American Rescue Plan, through the feds, they're doing some things today and putting out more information, but there's still no information that gives us what this money can be used for. So they're still working through that, that process. It's still being based that all money that you receive must be spent before the end of December twenty twenty-four. So I don't know that you can bank money, we talked about.
Yeah.
But again, from what I'm reading, there's, none of that's, none of this is written stuff.
Right.
That's what they put out at the beginning. So I foresee some things changing, how much, I'm not sure. The other things that we talked about, or I mentioned last month was infrastructure, which could be water, sewer, possible stormwater, and internet in rural areas. So those are some of the big part of it. And then you've got items where the state or municipal or counties can get some funds to local hospitals or things of that nature that had to deal with the pandemic where they may have lost money or things of that sort. There's still a lot of things out there to work with. Budget wise, Jan and I have started on it, or she started her portion, I need numbers from her. I have tentatively written down Monday, May twenty-fourth and Thursday, May twenty-seventh, to have budget workshop in.
Say Monday?
May twenty-fourth, which is two weeks from today, and then that following Thursday, which will be the twenty-seventh.
You remind us of that one.
Yeah, we'll send something out. We'll send that information out.
Can you have the department, he's the team person?
We'll do like we've done in the previous year, they'll be here. And if, what I hope for is on Monday, the twenty-fourth will be the general fund size, and then that Thursday, the twenty-seventh, will be water and children's, so we'll stay here for a minute. I think last year, we spent two and a half, three hours on that first night on this one, the general fund. So that'd be those dates for that. And then I think Tina put on your, at your table there, if you're interested in going to the municipal association meeting, which is scheduled for July twenty-second and twenty-fourth, and he'll be, let her know so she can have it all, all the information no later than May eighteen. But the meeting is July twenty-second through twenty-fourth, he'll be over there. She needs to know who you plan to go, no later than May eighteen, so let her know that before. That's all I have at this point.
General fund, our total cash account is two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Our revenue to date, four million, five hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We brought in seven hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars more in twenty-one than we got in twenty. I look back in the local auction money, a lot of people must be where they were buying and stuff like that, online and whatever, shopping, because we got a lot more local auction money than we have in town.
So what that difference was?
A lot of that was difference in business license, um, we'll say.
We had that leg transfer, and I would, I bring that up every, you know, we had the transfer that made us look like we had a debt student in nineteen, and we had a tenant.
But still, we're getting a lot more in than, I'll go back and look at it, it's safe. And then our expenses, for year to date, our expenses is four million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. It's two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two more dollars more in twenty-twenty than in twenty-one that we spent. Our water and sewer, our total of.
Fiscal year to date, correct?
Yes, that's correct, fiscal year to date. Everything we operate on is fiscal year, okay? Water and sewer, our total restricted and non-restricted accounts, our total of three million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, forty-one dollars. Our year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date revenues is three million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. A difference of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars more that we brought in in twenty-one than we did in twenty.
That was the move, weren't we negative last, last weekend?
And then our expenses, year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, two million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Last year, I'll tell you, our fiscal year-to-date was three million, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, which is a hundred and twelve thousand, sixty-three dollars more in twenty-twenty than in twenty-one on the expenses. Stormwater, our stormwater, our cash account's fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Our year-to-date fiscal is a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Last year fiscal date was a hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty, which we brought in three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six more dollars this year than we did last year on the fiscal year-to-date. The fiscal year-to-date expenses is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and nine dollars on our current fiscal year-to-date. Last year fiscal year-to-date was a hundred and one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. A difference of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, but a majority of that is ninety-three thousand, six hundred and forty, which is that our FEMA hazard mitigation fees, um, study that they're doing that we will get reimbursed, um, so that's what that is.
And when we get reimbursed, that's after we.
After it's completed.
Right, okay, but what do we get on household?
Four dollars. Four dollars for household, everything else is five dollars.
Okay. What is that generating?
About a hundred and. We budgeted this year, we're at a hundred and thirty-eight. We collected eighty, almost eighty-six percent, so.
About eleven thousand, seven hundred and one. So we're in the, we've got two employees?
Yeah. Our expenses, two employees, the back of trucks right now, the millionaire in college, so that's it.
When is the back of the truck?
Got one more.
What who?
One thing.
For the back of truck, yeah. That'll take place between one and twenty-two, right?
I believe it's an off-site one, it's did.
Was that used?
Yes, yeah.
Wasn't that out of brokerage?
Or accounted for?
The golf course, our cash account's forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Our fiscal year-to-date revenues is two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Last year, year fiscal year-to-date was a hundred and fifty-four thousand, thirteen dollars, which we brought in fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven more in twenty-one than we did in twenty. And we've transferred only seventy-five thousand fiscal year-to-date versus last year fiscal date was a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're forty-five thousand more transferred in twenty-twenty. Our expenses, fiscal year-to-date is three hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Last year fiscal date was three hundred and six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. A difference of seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars more in twenty-one than in twenty-twenty. And that's the lowers and other equipment and capital parts from load and tons.
That pump was what, about forty-nine? What was that, murder?
That pump.
Well, we actually had two problems. We had one for the pond and one for some irrigation, so that was about, I had thirty thousand.
For even?
No, the total. There was one about seventeen, another one was about fourteen.
Our special revenue is two percent hospitality fund, we've got a million, fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars in the account. Our revenue fiscal year-to-date, five hundred and forty-one thousand, sixty-one dollars. Last year fiscal year-to-date was four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. We brought in a difference of forty-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars more in twenty-one than we did in twenty. And we had April, I think, was our biggest month. We look back and see, you know, a lot of people have a lot more.
Yeah, sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars.
That we had.
Fifty-five thousand.
Well, all I see is that beach is gonna be popping or something, um, it's gonna be big, so.
That's all I have.
The only, the only concern about, you know, we've got all this stimulus money going out right now and, you know, I don't wanna be too, you know, carefree about depending on that much income every year because I think that when the stimulus money stops coming, then that puts local auction, sales tax money, it's starting to run down. Probably gonna do the budget, you ought to look at, keep it around what it was.
So what we do is, is we go back to the last five people.
But I, I just don't think that's gonna continue to happen. But I think, you know, that, the beach is gonna be big, and I bet. But any word on Zach's piece?
Captain, we're still waiting for them to block the building, so we had to talk to some of the contractors and subcontractors, but we haven't spoken to the general contractor that will do the renovations yet.
They submitted their plans, right?
Uh, not for the general contractors.
What did they submit?
Uh, signed one, I think it's that nature.
All right, citizens report? Yes, sir.
How y'all doing?
Good.
I come to try to get some help on some trash pickup, and I'm having a terrible problem. You know, I spent three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on property taxes, but I had to take all the furniture and all the clothes and all the trash that people were eating. I had to, instead of putting it on the streets, I put it on the trucks and take it out to the landfill or to load it up the streets. And, you know, they, they charging me there and I talked to Glenn and he tried to help me in any way, Ken. But what I'm seeing is they pick it up on like a Tuesday here in Dillon, the southern areas, or different days. And if we put that trash out there, I don't know how anybody would like to walk outside their house and see that trash pile loading up in the, right out there beside where they live at. And it's a really, really bad looking on the, on the city of Dillon.
Where is this?
That's something else.
Oh, that's something else. Where are you tracking that?
It's all over, it's in, it's in all the areas whatsoever. So we took a dumpster that we could try to get one from the city and they have all their dumpsters out. We had to get one from the county, put it behind a general building and try to start loading it up. Then everybody started putting trash air whatsoever, you know, we worked on that and tried to clean it up. But all the areas, they putting out furniture, you know, the stem and the package, if they buy furniture and stuff like that, they putting out old furniture when people leaving. You wouldn't believe what they leaving in the houses. They leave their clothes, they leave furniture, their dishes. And we gotta have some where to put that there, so instead of loading it up on the streets and waiting for the city to come picking it up, the couches and the chairs, we basically were taking it to the landfill, but they, they charging us left and right on that. And we feel like we pay enough on property taxes and we just don't wanna break our nerve, sit down and look like, you know, that trash has got set beside the road for a whole week before somebody picks it up. And that means if there's a storm comes or wind comes, it blows it all over the place. It looks like, you know, it looks really terrible in all areas. And I've just, and I think some of the councilmen have seen some of this stuff here all over town, and it really needs to be addressed. I don't mind doing, I've been doing it for thirty-eight years and I've been trying to keep it clean and make a difference in Dillon, but I need a little help. I'm looking out, I don't, you would get help if I tried to, now I'm asking for it because I feel like it's dirty. I paid a lot in property taxes and I should be able to get something out of that. And, you know, we have an apartment complex that has thirty-two apartments, they give us one dumpster there, you know what I mean? And then when the people come and they put the trash air all over underneath it, when they take the dumpsters out, there's trash all underneath the dumpsters. We had a movement the other day, a movement periodically, we've got thirty-two bags of trash up underneath where the dumpster just sat on top of it. It just ain't a good way of doing.
We dumped that?
Sorry?
We dumped that dump?
Yes, sir. And then over it had, that's in Deerfield and Rosewood.
There was actually two dumps there.
Sorry?
There's two dumps there, and we planted up ourselves, but we're working to try to bring it up. Then you're gonna end up with three, I think, but we're just waiting on something to get fixed right now.
Well, how's the continued?
Well, some of the problems that I've noticed, and I talked to some residents in Deerfield, there's people going in there from the whole county and wherever, and they're going and dumping
where his, where that stuff is. They just take their whole house and just like you see in this picture right here, they going and dumping everything from everywhere in the whole county. And then they expect people like him and others to remove this stuff. And I, I understand it's just not him, it's other people's stuff I pay calls. And I just, I like, I mean, whatever we can do to clean this city up, I mean, I, I can't do much with the county, but it seems like all the trash in the county now, since you started putting pressure on it in the county, is coming into the city. And I think we gonna get the raft of it in the end. Because I know that there, I think Hoghead has both lay down on them in the county. And they're putting cameras up in the trees and they're catching these individuals doing the same thing out of the county, so.
What are you gonna do to them?
I guess to take it to court. Take it on the fine, take it to court. But the point is, y'all, if you stop it in the county, this comes to us, this right here. I mean, we can't stop it.
We just don't know what to do. It's really out of control. And, I mean, it's furniture, the couches, I mean, clothing, it's, it's just everything. And then we just, it's just so much property and we have so much out there. We just don't know what to do. We just don't wanna wait in St. West. It's like, they come picking it up today, they, they have a truck that goes around and they go pick it up and if you don't get it there, we don't know what day we wanna be, somebody's gonna be moving. But if we go after they go pick it up, it sits there a whole week, if they come out and pick it up the next week, which, you know, I please, the city's doing a great job, I can call Bert up anytime and he'll help me in any way whatsoever, and I can call Glenn at any given time. And he tries to help me whatever he can do also, but they just limited on what they can do. So, you know, I was told to come here and talk to y'all and see what we can do. You know, you just, I just asked myself, it's really out of control, there's trash everywhere. And we've been picking it up, but we don't mind picking it up. We don't mind taking it and hauling it, keeping it clean, raking it up. We don't, but we just don't want to get charged.
When we get out of that part of the city.
No.
To, at the dump, a week?
That's, that's a question, that's, that's more.
We take our stuff that we, you know, we dump in our, we do their dumpster, we dump.
Now, that's ain't dumpster stuff. This is totally different.
I thought this was a rounder dumpster.
No, no, no.
That's just a company area, it's not. All the residential is that way also. I think all the residential homes are, they have trash unbelievable there.
It's.
This is, this is where we at. Alan had called me a couple of months ago about having an issue about having to pay. And he says, you know, we have rental houses, people move out, they leave you this, 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 and this. I said, Alan, if they leave you a couch, if I broke college, we'll come out and pick you up. If they leave you a mattress, if I broke college, we'll come pick you up. But this picture that you got in front of you is what was brought to my kitchen Friday morning or Friday afternoon that is not just couches and mattresses, there's all kinds of stuff here. And if we're gonna pick this up, I don't pick this up at my house or your house, you don't say it's residential. We don't do that. It's got to be in a county.
But one thing, if we're taking this up, you have to holler at the mixed trash. So when you holler at the mixed trash, you're paying double the rate. You're paying, you're going from twenty-eight dollars a ton to sixty-three dollars a ton. So when we, like, when we clean up on the streets, the trash has to be separated. Because if not, you're gonna have to dump on the hill at the landfill and pay the double rate. That's why they don't set mixed trash.
And we get separated. We have no problem with that. But against that arrangement, it's in the side of the street there. It's all beside the street. It really looks great when you drive by there. You know, you should see it. This is a body. They don't leave little stuff, it's body. And we can, we can blend it. What that picture shows there is no indication of what's happening actually. That's another whole different thing that we were taking there and other people were trying to take advantage. But what's really happening is just this regular household, it's couches. And I know Glenn has to throw his couch outside and, and, and somebody might have to, you might have to get somebody to pick it up. We need the same help also with couches. We need some help with their clothing that they leave out there. And I'm talking about bags, the trash, that Glenn said, we'll put it in the, in the can. Well, it won't fit in the can. It ain't gonna fit, it's too much volume. I mean, what did we do? It ain't gonna fit in the can.
The issue is, again, couches, mattresses, things of that nature, we can have, have them properly picked up. But I can't skip somebody to be with you on a daily basis when somebody moves out. That's, you know.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then I can't, somebody tears out a wall or, or thing of that nature. You, that is a, your rental property is a business.
We're not tearing out walls.
I didn't say anywhere.
We do dumpsters. When we do that, we ask for a dumpster, we do construction, and we pay for that separately. We don't want that to be a cost. We, we feel like that's construction. We don't want that to be, uh, a cost, we, we feel like that's construction, we wanna do it and do that. I'm just talking about trash, it's a, the trash that they leave and generate. I mean, it's a lot, it really is, it's a lot, and it costs.
Alright, so, so you take it to the landfill?
Yes, sir.
Then you, you have to pay then?
Have to pay then, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, let me ask you this, you said you pay three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars in, in property taxes?
Yes, sir.
How much of that is county tax?
Uh, well, I will not, I, I really don't know, but we pay city on, on...
Where you paying city?
Uh, two hundred eighty-something thousand.
Two hundred eighty?
They collect money off me and don't wanna help me. They don't take my money, don't wanna help me.
I think is, is the county charging the same that they charge the city for a ton?
If, if it's not mixed, yeah, I mean, they're gonna charge the same, so you take some, they're gonna charge the same thing.
Lims and leaves is fifty dollars a ton or twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight.
Verified by? Uh, everything else is fifty something, fifty-three.
Fifty-three dollars.
Now, where we have our dumpsters, and I'm sure we have a, a inventory of where they're sitting.
Yes.
Now, if someone brings it to that area, can they put it in at no cost?
What dumpster, do you kind of, wait a second, what kind of dumpster?
I'm just saying, if we have a area, like, a, a lot, and had dumpsters, uh...
No, we don't have that.
Okay.
We don't have that.
We're going to, then, the then you gonna have on people from outside and see, don't you mind?
Well, see, the problem, Alan...
There's so much, it's not property tax, it's county tax.
Problem is, Glenn, when I see a public, when I see a public debris...
We talking to your role, I think.
And every time we get a call to bring on the side of the road and people see, they go home and get their debris and they come back and...
I'm not, not disputing, not disputing. The thing that, you know, for y'all is your policy, not Glenn's policy, is we only pick up limbs and leaves on the side of the road. We will pick up couches, we will pick up beds, we'll pick up a refrigerator if you call us and let us know you put it out there, because we don't want those out there for more than a day's time. We don't pick up everything eggs out of houses. They put it in a rolling cart, right, they're charred, they take it somewhere and sell it. We don't, we don't pick that up off the side of the road.
And let me tell you something, you go to Myrtle Beach, you can't put your clippings out there.
Yeah, that, well, Myrtle Beach has a, we, we do have a couple of properties here and they, they do, Doc, pick up that, but they Johnny on the spot, they have a, they have a team.
How do you do, how do you get yours done at Myrtle Beach?
They, they just pick it up, I meant North Myrtle Beach there, they pick it up, yes, we, we down there, shit's wheel, they picked it up and all kinds of separate, every time I put it down there, they have no problem.
You call them?
No, no, sir, they get, they come by every Tuesday. They come by with their truck every Tuesday, but they have a, a team where they have a truck that rides through every area and whatsoever.
They get your grass clippings and...
They get your grass, they get your, uh, limbs, they get your everything, that's part of, they...
They don't flake, they just... They put a refrigerator out there?
They, whatever you wanna put out there, they pick it up, they don't, they, they have it, yeah.
Not been my experience.
Well, yes, sir, but I, I can give you some pictures, I reckon I can get some up for you, but they, they unloaded a lot of stuff, I just remodeled that out there. And they, I put some stuff there and they pick it right up for you, Johnny on the spot, they really do. But here, you know, we ask, we not asking for, they do a good job with, with the legs and limbs and stuff like that, they do good.
Yeah.
We're just asking, do y'all want the debris on the road? I mean, do you want it beside the road to make our town look bad or what we wanna do here? Just need some type of headcount.
Yeah, so, man.
It just looks terrible when you, when we work so hard to get, get it to a different level and we had a whole different world now, we're trying to keep the city looking good. Looks terrible to leave anybody beside the road for a whole week, waiting for that next Tuesday to come and all that stuff beside the road, all over the, all over the town, it just don't look good.
I want y'all come back with some options, I'd like to have some verification exactly, you know, in this city, I mean, you know, some verification of whether there's taxes on, and whether that, you know, uh, liability should be placed on law, so the county, you know, should they be doing a little bit more on, um, it's a lot, you know, it's a lot of money to pay the taxes.
Let me ask you this question. If I, if I had a dumpster, one summer, available down at Bird Shop, you'd take it back?
Yes, sir.
You, you'll take it to that dump?
I sure would, I'd take it to that dump.
I can do, that's a good... But now, whatever the, whatever the county gives is your call, that agree?
Well, if that was construction or, or that on household item?
Well, I mean, if it's mixed, you know...
Well, if I just keep it unmix, I mean, I, you know, we, we always pay for our construction, we never ask for any help, she getting rid of any construction whatsoever. We just asking for what the residential, what everybody else gives in the whole town, and we just asking for, when they have trash, if everybody gets their trash picked up, we asking for the same thing, that the houses are in the town, we asking for the same service that everybody in this room gives in the city. That's what we asking for, nothing else.
Okay. So, this is the solution?
But you're saying you willing to total pour?
No, I'm willing to take it and not put it beside the road for it to blow and, and be like a disaster, but Glenn...
But if you'll, if you'll bring it to me, why not take it to the landfill?
I will, I can take it to the landfill. I have no problem, I just don't wanna get charged for it. I just, I still wanna get charged.
That's what the, that...
That's what we here for, yeah, that's what we here for.
Yeah, how many times a month, just, how many times a month does this happen, is for somebody moving out, is it?
Well, does it, it all depends.
What's your monthly cost out?
Yeah, I, I would say, if we kept up with it monthly or something like that, it might would be five, six, seven hundred dollars, and it wouldn't be nothing major, it's just that when you let it go, you know, whatsoever, and that's when it adds up. But I think if you did it monthly, it would definitely be five, six, seven hundred dollars in that range or under that. It would, in all appearance, you never know when somebody's gonna move, and I'm telling you, when they leave, they leave.
Your biggest problem, guys, you're saying if it stays there for a long period of time, it blows all down the road and pick it up.
I don't think that's the problem.
Well, they calling him up to see him, and then he has to go get it in the back.
But I think the problem is, is cops.
Well, the problem is the couples, I think, Glenn. One of them is, I don't like to see stuff all over the place, and I have neighbors that's in the area call me up and say, man, that stuff's all over the place. I said, call the city and see what they say. And another thing is, I don't want to bear the cost that every other party, everybody else residentially, just this service here, it's just, I can't get it because I reckon, I don't get no cut and no taxes or anything like that, but I can't get it because I rent these houses out, but I pay the same property taxes.
Frankly, what you're saying is, person's stuff...
It's not my stuff.
It's not your stuff.
That's right.
Like, I put it out there and I didn't take care of my stuff, and then I got in my car and I leave it.
He's taking it out of the house, they leaving it in the house.
Yeah, they leaving it in the house, that's what they do.
But it's their stuff.
It's their stuff, it's not my stuff.
Let's, let us discuss it, Alan, and, and come back to something, because my dad had some rental properties back in the day, and when people would move out, it would be twenty to thirty, thirty gallon bags of just stuff, it should've went in the roll-out car over the past three months.
Yes, exactly.
The four months, that didn't. And I know, I kinda know exactly what he's talking about, and, I mean, they just leave, you name it, you find it, just don't work, I mean, it's, it's, I know exactly where it's coming from.
You are right on top of it, because it happens that way, we just don't want to go take your stuff here and then put it beside the road, it looks terrible. The neighbors don't wanna see it, y'all wouldn't wanna see it when you walk out, I don't wouldn't wanna see it. It's just really, and it's not all the time, it's not like this happens every day or this happens all of the darn time, it's just periodically, sometimes it's worse than, than others. And it's just small amount, we, we don't mind handling it, it's just after a while, man, you get tired of it. You know, you're taking it and getting charged and you're not getting any, you know, you're paying full taxes and everybody, I mean, everybody else is getting the service, but it seems like, because I own this residential, I, I can't get the service that everybody else is paying for?
Can I, can I ask you more questions? I mean, this, this is a business question. So, when somebody rents a property from, they have to pay a deposit?
But, but a lot of times they can't afford a deposit. We ask them for it, they can't, but they can't afford it a lot of times. They can't come up with eight hundred dollars, and if you rent it out for four hundred, they can't come up with eight hundred, they can't do that. Wish they could, but we can deal with it, they can't afford it.
But going forward, you're thirty-two units, giving you another trash can out there where they're alleviating, putting trash all over the ground and everything?
And Mr. Johnny, I could've been wrong, part of the tax is right, we do have two dumpsters there. And already, he said, he's talking about they get hurt, it's a nature problem, you got thirty-two units there and you only have the two dumpsters and thirty-two families right there, I mean, these are families too, and they throwing that stuff all over the place. We have the same problem at Rosewood and, you know, uh, I think it's Washington saying that themselves over there, where they only have two dumpsters there for forty-three apartments. And man, it's just, it's just immense, that, that, it's just, gotta be a better plan to try to get it cleaned up and get it organized for it to look good on the city and work smoothly instead of chaos.
We can, that's simple, that was simple, whether we put another can or pick you up more than once or twice a week, we can do that, but that's the cost, you realize that?
Well, I, is it a cost to me again?
Yes.
Why's it always cost me?
No, it's, it's a cost. I mean, that's just a money...
But we get forty-three...
If you have, I, I charge each resident, or we charge each resident with a roll-out, roll-out cart.
That's forty-three, so what would you charge a resident?
Whatever, whatever the rates are.
What would you charge a regular residence of a house, what would you charge them taxes?
It's twenty-five dollars for a roll-out cart. And they pick it up one time a week.
And if you get them for water and sewer?
That's totally different.
Yeah, but twenty-five times forty-three, now, that's, that's a good cost when they just air there. I mean, that's just don't, they pay...
I mean, that's...
And we're late.
That's something council can change, but...
If you got twenty-five times forty-three, that's a lot.
How much are you paying now for the two, uh, cans?
Doc, I really don't know, I don't know what we, Glenn, you know what we...
No, I can't go idea. Thirty-two residents, he's paying twenty-five dollars a resident, whatever that might be. Is that twelve hundred dollars?
I pay twelve hundred dollars, yeah, I pay twelve hundred dollars for the dumpster. I'm not...
You pay, yes, per resident, not for the can?
Yeah, per key, if they're thirty-two, thirty-two apartments, they're being charged twenty-five dollars a month. Yeah, per...
Three in twenty-five.
Well, whatever roll-out cart is, that's why they don't have roll-out cart. No, they're, the cans are separate, but they're being charged for roll-out cart.
But what he's trying to say, Glenn, is that, um, a apartment complex is, if you got forty-three, we charge them a resident from roll-out cart per unit.
They pay for water and sewer.
I, I... So, who pays, who pays?
Do you?
You pay it, the customers pay it.
Yeah, there's, no, Deerfield, the customer pays.
The customers pay, Alan not pay.
So, actually, the, the cost for, the customers pay it.
Just like you pay for your trash, y'all?
They're paying it.
Forty-three, I remember it, had, Rosewood, big house paid for, you know what I mean?
And then you being charged, then you paying for a dumpster?
I get charged for water and sewer for every single one.
But you're talking two different, you're talking after and on.
Yeah, I don't charge water and sewer, we don't have to charge some, some...
I mean, we're not talking about water and sewer, we're talking about the same table.
I get charged for forty-three units there.
So, what about the building?
You get in free water, you pay your water bill?
I pay my water, I, water, I pay my water.
You can claim your water, sewer and trash in your building?
I pay my water, water, I pay for the water, sewer and the trash, I pay for all forty-three of them.
I'll go out to Deerwood.
Uh, Deerwood, we, uh, they, they help Deerfield, but, but they pay for that, they pay for the, they're, but I'm, I'm paying all that for, for the trash and the maintenance, I wish y'all would've right out there, it'd be worth a lot.
I get you that.
You think it's pretty bad for them?
And beyond that, that's the point, get organization.
Y'all, y'all get together with them, I would like to, for yourself, we're gonna... You can learn that enough, huh? You can learn that enough, huh?
We'll get that.
Thank y'all, I don't think I'm bothering y'all.
You do, you did what I asked you to do.
I love you, Glenn.
Somebody, bitch.
I keep doing, it was a good time, it's time to help me out, bro, I'm just, thank y'all.
Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, city council members. I'm gonna protect the congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand for you as your VA, right now a volunteer, and I have been since two thousand and seven under Jerry Huggins, and I continue to work and work hard as Mr. Jay Davy can tell you. Um, I stand for you with several requests for our veterans, not for me, but for our veterans. Our veterans are being pushed to the side, they are not being treated with respect as they need to be. Right now, and I'm looking at Dr. Spock, because he sees a lot of our veterans, as a VA volunteer, it is not a ninety-five job, it is a twenty-four-seven job. And I try to do it to the best of my ability because my father is a veteran. He was in for ten years and I do it because he is. My mom, John Snack, pushes me to be the best person that I can be. Since two thousand and seven, when I joined under Jerry Huggins, I've been doing the following job. Dillon County Deceased Veterans List, to date from May of two thousand and twenty, up to date of today, we have eighty-three deceased veterans on that list for Judge Lockman to read on Memorial Day. On a day-to-day basis, I'm confronted by families of veterans, all having, some have shredded charts before their time has even come. And hopefully, if I can get some standing, I'll be able to continue putting those charts back together again, some of my heart put back together. We need more attendance at these military ceremonies, not only from our military families, but from council members, doctors, lawyers, judges, attending me, they, sometimes on a monthly basis, but now it's on a daily basis, thanks to Benny Cooper who is live-streaming our veteran funerals, I'm able, through Home Vision, I'm able to live-stream those and I'm able to report on those from a day-to-day basis. I'm feeding one of our veterans who wants to remain nameless on, almost on a monthly basis. Council, I am asking you, I am begging you, with our military ceremonies, these veterans are not getting what they need as far as protein and as far as food and snacks are considered. I'm asking council for a small amount of money to allow me to be able to purchase some snacks for them either before or after these military ceremonies happen. Right now, we are left with fifty-seven veterans alive in this county that I know of, and I've talked to all of our, our funeral homes. My job consists of funeral home daily paperwork pickup through computer, through printer. Fortunately, my mom, I've been blessed to have my mother who continues to pay for ink with her printer. Me with the paperwork, I have all my paperwork in line ready to hand to you tonight. I'm also the young woman who makes the red, white and blue flag bracelets. Up to date of today, I've put anywhere from twenty to forty thousand of those flag bracelets into all military cans, and I still continue to do that on a day-to-day basis, wherever[1688.51] And I still continue to do that on a day-to-day basis, wherever I go, or whatever mailouts need to be done. Again, I am begging counsel to take this under their wing, under your wing, and to give our veterans the utmost respect and service that they deserve. A lot of them are coming back from Vietnam, not having been thanked. A lot of them are coming back from service, from Afghanistan, Iraq, having not been thanked. Gone home from an airplane to family without any kind of celebrations. Counsel, I am begging you to take this under your wing as hard as it might be. I have a listing of all military funeral websites that I look at. I have a whole listing of funeral home websites that I've been through every single day to make sure that I am not leaving any fallen Dylan County veteran behind, and judge has this list for Memorial Day to be read. It's a big job, I honor it, I take it under my wing. Mr. Huggins is dead, as critically ill as he is, he is still taking it under his wing and servicing me as well. Closing out, veteran files are being recreated to date with some help that I have. Counsel, I need your help with the following issues. We need to have more US flags available to our fallen veterans. We need to have a way of getting more US medals into their families' hands in an easier and faster option. Number three, we need to have an appropriate time for burials and for utmost respect of our veterans. Four, headstones need to be looked at, cleaned, at appropriate time, and flags placed there before each and every military ceremony takes place. Military funeral home contacts and funeral home contacts are all contacted by me on a daily basis. Counsel, I'm begging you to take this under your wing and look at it. I'm not asking for much, but it would be appreciated to have either snacks and, and/or something small for them at each and every military ceremony that we have in Dylan. And I know that there are only two, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And we're coming up on Memorial Day. As I said in the opening, we are, we now have eighty-three fallen on the Dylan County deceased list. I am begging each and every one of you council members to take this under your wing. Dr. Wallace, I would like to further, be able to further contact you in a more recent timeframe, maybe on a weekly timeframe basis, to keep you updated. Again, ladies and gentlemen, Jerry Huggins is behind me, as critically ill as he is. The funeral homes are begging for help. I try to be there when they need me to be. And I thank Mr. Jay David for allowing me this opportunity. And I would beg you to vote on snacks and, and things for our veterans for the ceremonies.
Um, any, any comments?
I do, um, Kim?
Yes.
In the previous year, well, the previous year, I know that the city paid for breakfast for the veterans.
Right, we could not have breakfast because of COVID-nineteen.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, previous year, the city paid that for the breakfast for the veterans.
Well, we would still like to, we only had a small amount of snacks last year, and that's why I'm asking for a little bit more, because we ran out before the ceremony had been ended. It was a very small amount, very small.
But are you planning to have the breakfast this year?
I have not been contacted as of that, I've been told that was barred just because of COVID-nineteen.
So this is what I'm, we, we've spent money each year for the breakfast prior to either Memorial Day or, like, I mean, uh.
For veterans.
We've always done that over the years. Can you go into any local businesses and ask?
I've tried, and they've all turned me down and barred, everything's concerned. I know Mrs. Winstuff did it last year.
Did what?
The snacks bar, but I know that she did it last year.
Yeah, and any, any idea what that cost you?
Um, they told me around like fifty, sixty dollars, somewhere around in there. Crackers, you know, sodas, water, that's usually what we put on those tables every year. Can you contact me?
So all you asking for is twenty-two, about two prior to these meetings, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Is there another group involved in that?
No, it would just, just want to tell.
Is there a place that citizens wanted to donate, that they could make a donation?
Usually, they would take it to the VA office, but a lot of times that office is closed.
So if we had citizens wanting to donate, where could we have them mail a check to? Or how would they make it out?
That's a good question. Glenn, what is that?
No, I mean, I, I don't deal with it. I think Johnny Daniels does some stuff, WBA.
He does, and he had, he, his group brought breakfast biscuits and water and soda and stuff down there before the last several veterans events. And then you also have the ladies from the V, uh, with the American Legion ladies that go in there and have the reception inside after. And he does monthly food boxes also.
We do need the food boxes, y'all, because that is vital importance. Because as I said, a lot of our veterans are not getting protein, they're not getting full meals.
Do they have access to the Dylan cans?
Some of them do, but some of them are so, I don't know, they don't know there.
Well, there's a mechanism there, though. I mean, there's a mechanism to help.
And I told, I told him that.
This is saying Johnny Daniels, who's Little Harold, he does that with, his group does that, doesn't it?
Yeah, they do, they do like a monthly food box.
But a lot of them are too proud to go to places to take that, because they're, they're service members, you know, it's all. I talked to a lot of them about that.
All right, thank you. Any other citizens?
Okay, I, I know y'all have been beaten to death with bad news. I'm gonna have a little bit more, and then I'm gonna have some good news, so bear with me, okay? All right, first off, I want to speak as a business owner of G G Z Docs and two oh nine East Main. Um, I put a lot of money into my business, the one that looks good and the one that is now torn down, to make them that way, okay? I am feeling a little salty, because the way that our downtown looks, there are at least three of us in here, four of us, that own businesses, that spend a lot of money on our buildings. Um, it is not fair to us, for other people that own multiple properties on Main Street and within the city, that are not willing to keep up their buildings to a adequate standard. It's not fair for them to bring us down. And it's bringing the whole, not just our properties, it's bringing the whole city down. And I implore the council to come up with some solution, to do something about that. I don't know what that is, because as I work through DCA, I know it is difficult as well. But I just want to say it's not fair how we're, how things are going now. So, and life is not always fair, but, you know, we have got to get this city under control. Um, okay, so that brings our property values down. The condemned buildings, we've all discussed that many times in here. It's only gonna take us tearing down one to get the ball rolling. And people are gonna open their eyes and say, the city really means what they say when they condemn this building, that if I don't get it fixed, they're going to tear it down. Um, so that, or either people need to be willing to sell it, or fix it up, or whatever. Now, I'm gonna speak as the DCA person. I can tell you, we have grant, we have grant money that we tried to hand out to people on Main Street that own buildings, that desperately need a facade overhaul. We, we have a maximum of three thousand dollars that we could give them. We offered them that. We were told, it will cost me fifteen thousand dollars to fix my building. It's not worth it to me to take your three thousand dollars and, and apply it to my fifteen thousand dollars. That is just ludicrous as a building owner. I mean, that, that's just so unfair. And we need to come up with something within our city that prevents people from holding us hostage, because they, those, they're holding me hostage with the property values on my property when they have that mentality. It's not fair. If you have a business or a building on Main Street, you need to be responsible for keeping it up to a certain standard. And if you can't, then you need to get rid of it. Okay, so that's all I'm gonna say about that. Now, on to the good news. We had this, uh, First Friday at the Fountain, last Friday. We had an excellent turnout for our first time. The weather was a little iffy, um, but it turned out really nice. The band was great, we had a great, um, crowd, and it was, um, how do I want to say? It, it, we had a great crowd from all walks of life, young, old, all kind of people there. We even brought in people from Robeson County, I know, um, because my daughter-in-law knew them. So, we are doing what we're supposed to with the funds that we receive from the accommodation tax, because that's what actually put that on, bringing people in from out of the county. Um, we will continue to have, we probably had an easy hundred and fifty people there, Glenn, wouldn't you say?
Superdope.
Yeah, and, I mean, it was nice, it, you know, nothing got out of hand, everybody had a good time. We will continue to do that in June and July on the First Fridays as well. And then depending on how far we can stretch our funds with, um, sponsorships and things, and how it's going to compete with the Friday Night Football here, we would like to continue to do them into the fall. But I do appreciate the city and the council for giving us that accommodations money. I'd love to, I saw several people out there. I'd love to see y'all all stop by at the event, because it was a whole lot of fun. Um, and if y'all have any, um, recommendations, any, um, concerns, or anything that you want to see a certain, we like, we want to get to the point where we pair the kind of music with the type of food that we have there, so it becomes a cultural experience as well. But we're learning all of this as we go, so.
Turkey legs, go to any town you just.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try to get some turkey legs in the future. I've already been contacted about the funnel cake, so we'll have that under control. But our president, Steve Johnson, also would like to speak.
Not quite sure what Stephanie just didn't go in. Um, but I, first part of what she said, I really echoed. I own three buildings, four, I think, downtown, right by any of them. And if they're not near Maglet, let me know, because they're gonna be. But Stephanie tried, you know, we spend money, she's spent a ton of money down on her building. Um, and we're investing in the city of Dylan. It's not fair to us to have a building next door, or three doors down, that looks like a third world built. It's just, this is just, we're, we're, it's, it's two thousand and twenty-one, people. You know, that, that's crazy. It's crazy that, that we have that there, and that we just let it go. I don't know what the answer is, but there is an answer. You got, you got to put it, you know, if, if any of you had somebody right now beside your house, because I know where I live, and they just, this house is just falling to the ground, you don't know if there's raccoons in it or whatever, you wouldn't put up with that. There's no way you would. You know, you would make sure that the city took care of that. We're only just asking for the same thing downtown for that. So that wasn't what I was gonna speak on, but she started, she didn't know that. Um, what I want to speak on is part of DCA. We are a nine-member board, seven of our nine members own businesses downtown. One works in a business downtown, the other one's in education. Um, so we're, we're, we're not just on a Dylan Community Alliance board. You know, we, we are above, as you can get, you know, with the, with any city, much less a downtown. But because of that, you know, we're small business owners, we have to work all day long. And, you know, four, five hours a night, we're there. So for us to plan like the First Fridays and, and, and to work a business on the downtown, to get our downtown, I, I, I think all of y'all want to see our downtown prosper, look good. Otherwise, you wouldn't be living here in Dylan, you'd move somewhere else. You want your kids and your grandkids to stay here and grow up, just like me? Um, if that happened, we'd, we'd really gotta get tough on some things, you know? There's no sense in me going, owning three buildings downtown, and they're looking great, and somebody lives on in three buildings, and they're looking like crap. I'm just, to be honest with you, that's, that's, I mean, I'm saying that as nice as I can say it. Um, so what we need, uh, for Dylan Community Alliance is some funding for that. We would like to hire a part-time director that can focus on not just events, but working on building owners downtown. Um, we would like to, I guess, uh, have y'all give us funds for that, which we would like to hire that person, take that burden off of Glenn, I guess. Um, so that person working for the city, that would actually work for us. And we, we got twelve thousand?
Twelve-five for, um, the.
The hospitality.
The hospitality.
Now, we don't want to touch that, this is, this is on top of that. Because we're just gonna use that money, it's probably, it's, well, it's already pretty much spoken for, just on a budget. Yeah, so that money's already gone, and we just got it. Um, so we're asking for, on top of that money, um, each year, to hire a part-time director. Can leave it up to y'all, and how much?
What are you talking about?
I knew that was gonna be the question, I really was gonna, I was gonna kind of leave it up to y'all, but, you know, we're, we're thinking twenty to twenty-five thousand. If you paid somebody twenty dollars an hour, and you can go, actually, my wife told me last night, she had a foster child.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, no, it was twenty thousand dollars a year, twenty thousand eight hundred, I think. If, if they worked twenty hours a week, which is what we, we don't really need anybody full-time right now, it's not a full-time job. Um, we actually have somebody in mind, we actually talked to somebody that's doing this right now in a nearby city that might be interested in doing it for us, and they turn that city around, you see it all the time, it's on Facebook. Um, so, uh, you know, we, we have somebody in mind, and if that person doesn't work out, we would like to hire our own director, um, just to take that up, that the burden off. Glenn, y'all, y'all would rather have it as a city employee, um, just to give it that, you know, we'd take that too. But, um, we'll leave that part up to y'all, so. That's, that's what we're asking for, in this year's budget, because we know you're getting ready to talk about the budget. So we'd like to have that in the budget, if possible. And please.
What happened with, we used to have that, girl?
We're asking probably for about half of that.
I look, see the city going a different route, and we hire our own, sell them. Be a V coordinator, grant coordinator, slash whatever you want to be. And they may be partner in helping the community alliance.
Can, can I speak to that? Um, the only issue that I have with that is, and it's not because I'm on DCA, but it's because I also work with that director that we had last time, and we tried that program. The thing that I've learned from, from doing this, I spent a lot of hours studying and looking up information. It's time-consuming, and, and I do that because I want to do this the best that I can. Glenn would have to, or someone would have to manage that person, if y'all hired them as a city employee. And without truly knowing exactly all the things that are involved, that's kind of hard. Because, you know, they could be sitting over at their desk doing something, but they might not be getting the things accomplished that they need to. That's why I think it's a better option. If the city hires the employee and wants to have it as a budget item, that may be okay. But I really think that person needs to be under the supervision and the direction of DCA, because we know exactly what that person needs to be doing, grant-wise, Main Street program-wise, business-wise, to help our business, and we can kind of, you know, make sure that that happens. Glenn doesn't have time to make sure that that happens. He has too many other things going on. And we could do it cheaper.
Well, we probably want to get this resolved.
We, we just, I just wanted to bring it up, because we know y'all, you're talking budgets. So we just wanted to at least discuss it in your budget files and, um, you know, to, to, I guess, continue thinking of us and you can contact us, so just want y'all to think about that.
All right.
We really need it. Thank y'all.
All right, any other citizens report? New old business, new business, ordinance number twenty-one dash oh seven, meaning titled, chapter one, section seven, one, three, seek to order it to change expiration of business license day from May thirty-third to April twentieth of each year, first reading. Is there a leasing?
Yes, uh, some kind of general assembly voted last year that they were gonna standardize the business license process throughout the state. Prior to this being mandated, each city had its own way of doing things. Deadlines or, or expiration dates may be different than Dylan compared to Florence, compared to Dennis Hills, compared to Darlington, and so forth.
Just have to understand that.
They're, they're standardizing, um, some things, and then one of the first things that they're doing is making sure everybody's getting anything for the same thing. Um, since we have people who may have a business here or a business in another community. But having all of that same, so that's what this will be. Hours is pretty simple, because we're, we're a month, hours is usually May thirty-first. This will now begin this coming year, April thirty.
Can I get a motion?
Make motion.
Second? All those in favor? Resolution number zero-eight dash twenty-one, acquire certain property from Twin Lakes Enterprise LLC.
All right, this is, last month, I spoke to you about golf course, and Mr. Robert Johnson and Twin Lakes Enterprise LLC wanted to donate the golf course to the city, which only includes what we have today, the golf course, pro shop, and car share.
Is there some discussion on this?
Oh, yeah.
Needs to get a motion for that discussion.
And, and upon, I'm sorry.
I think motion.
I second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, um, I just wanted to get some information cleared up, or some understanding. Um, as far as the, the value of the golf course, what is the value of the golf course? Do we know?
All right, I don't.
Okay, um, property taxes, would the city have to pay property taxes?
Property taxes. Would the city have to pay property taxes?
We were exempt from paying property taxes while we had it, and we'd be exempted.
How about in the resolution, can you put, where you're gonna see so much money, put me to the golf course per year? You want to see a certain amount of money?
We always counsel it, because I determine that. The resolution that's being presented is to...
I am, that's how it is.
Up and down low for... When you get a donation for real estate like that, you don't have to refer free to state community or nothing like that?
Yeah, if we were selling property, we'd receive a donation, and y'all have to do it.
And I guess you can sell the property anytime?
Yeah, and right now, based on the resolution, we are...
And it'll be due to the city of Dillon?
Yeah. The only thing again, that we would not own,
No, I understand.
is the swimming pool and what I call the country club deal. And parking lot would be...
Parking lot use.
Mutual use.
Right.
Let's answer your question. In two years from now or six months from now, the city decides to land it, so...
I mean, because they talk about the uptown. I mean, we're taking a lot of money and throwing it out in the golf course. I mean, every councilman's got a notice in front of him.
Any other discussions? Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Post? Question carries. All right, Resolution number 09-21, authorizing submission application to South Carolina Order of Quality Resolving Revolving Fund Authority, what we've done.
All right. If you remember probably a year ago, maybe less, the Fed gave the State Department Commerce Building or the State Revolving Fund program X number of millions of dollars to do some things that would help mitigate flooding. And in this case, Hillside Drive, lift station, which we talked about previous times, qualifies with this money to do this project. This would be getting a million-dollar loan over a 20-year period with 1% interest over that 20 years, where we'd spend $100,000 in interest on this loan over a 20-year period.
Is there grants to do that?
No, sure. Because, see, that's not a grant. Doesn't fall into the Luton or income here. Hillside Drive, so you don't get grants like that. This would be the, it would be actual loan at 1% over a 20-year period. This is just giving the city authorization to submit an application for this.
And this is a lift station?
Yeah. Hillside Drive Lift Station in that sewer main that runs from the high school back to Hillside Drive.
That's the one that has had such problems?
When we get a flood, rain, ionized, all that, yeah.
So what room are we gonna save?
Yeah. Again, if you're looking at a 20-year note through the SRF, at an interest rate of 1%, over 20 years, you're gonna end up spending $100,000 on the interest plus the million payback, which is $55,000 to $56,000 annually paid.
All right. Can I get a motion? I mean...
I second.
All those in favor? Post? Question carries. Resolution number 10-21, authorizing the purchase of a drone to the police department through community facility grant funds.
All right. This is the grant through the United States Department of Agriculture that Chief David Lane applied for probably a year ago. USDA will pay $17,000 towards this project of buying the drone to the police department of $31,000, and then the city has to furnish the other $14,000 to this project.
Where are you taking the money out of?
Come out of the drone fund.
Does the training come along with it?
Training is part of that $31,000. Correct that, is right. Five officers.
Do you have RP officers that can do the door turn?
I asked two more to go, and I only have 1,000 more to go. Big motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Post? Resolution number 11-21, Safe Workplace.
Yeah, this is just an annual, or every time we have a general election, the resolution dealing with being a safe workplace.
Make a motion for that.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, post. All right. And the last, Resolution number 12-21, adopting the personnel handbook.
Again, something we have to do each year after the general election. The only thing that's changed prior to, from the previous handbook, we had to change some wording in health benefits. We had a longer and more detailed information with health benefits, because we were self-funded. Now that we're through P and S, that people is our health insurance provider, and we follow their guidance.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, make a motion. How about that's the question?
Okay.
Second.
My second. All right, go ahead.
So the employees don't lose their vacation time anymore. We should be paying for the vacation time?
No.
Okay, so...
The only thing, came back two years ago, we increased vacation from 2:40 to 2:80.
So when they get a 2:80, janitor realizes the property, that eight hours they're getting ready to lose. Are they able to be compensated for that, or...
No.
So they're losing their time. So how can we do a better job of letting the employee know that they're getting ready to lose their eight hours?
They see it on their show that much every week. It's printed out, which they have on there every week.
If you get, let's just say you maxed out a 2:80, and payroll determines the hours that it's paid. And you're at 2:80, it's on Thursday morning, you have any year, or left that...
It's on the anniversary.
On the anniversary.
On the anniversary, and if it falls in that week, it takes it that way. But they know prior to that, they know when they start to work for the city, and they know, they know that they're out.
Are you seeing a lot of your departments, are they losing their time?
Not a lot of them. More and more so do you guys.
The other question I have is, does the employee have the opportunity, instead of you taking like 40 hours, and they get it at plateau, can they get paid and still get a vacation day, but not take the time off?
Say that again?
Can't get paid for their time, so they're taking it off, the 40 hours. If they want to take the 40 hours...
Only those that the department is, don't want to do that. Because they pay for their time, so we love to do that. Salary, I mean hourly employees, you get overtime, so they don't have that option.
Motion's second. All those in favor? Post. All right.
I don't have anything else, Ross. Well, I have one thing. The finish mark thing, are we gonna do anything as far as...
Yes, I meant to bring that up, and, you know, two or three months ago, I brought up to council about you at the time to appoint a committee.
Okay.
And he suggested this was smart, I think, way to actually, and I thought about that, so we'll bring that back. Unless that's something you want to do tonight. I would ask that somebody from the Community Alliance group get a part of that, just so you have input from those folks.
Put down what you think, you know, what membership comes from?
I think three of council leaders. Three of council leaders, one of that, and then you... Anybody interested in doing that? I don't have any meetings that would do, I mean, I could be willing to serve on that. I don't have tons of time, but...
I'll do okay.
I'll do it together.
Okay. All right, so we got our cut through? And if you stick to the red or whoever schedules the date here.
Property in June, May, before your first meeting?
Okay.
All right, good.
I just wanted to thank Betsy for the paper, the article that put in concerning dogs. It was very informative and started a lot of buzz in the community. I've had a few calls. I hope something good comes out of it. I feel like it would. I don't know if you've had any comments, Ben, but...
We get a text, we get a text about once a day. And it would, just Betsy would put something in the paper and do some things on Facebook. But since you bring it up, you know, we can't do much, I don't know how much control we got. Somebody let their dog out, you know, coming off their property. Once we find out, we try to get it to the house, say, hey, you know, we didn't totally dog it, or home it, off the property. Now, if we see them off the property, that's a different story, but if we're trying to direct some best good, and to that being said, we're still have a vacancy and out of control. We'd be finding a lot of, never any, like, to fly in the last two months for that position.
Then he did right toe with it. They were calling back his vicious dog, vicious. So he decided to go right and tackle the dog. The dog was laid on the front porch, sunned it. He got out, the dog stood up. Here she come, ran right past him. Kind of kind of called the property, he's speaking, you won't play. It's a vicious dog.
But anyway, I just want to thank you, Betsy, for that. I know Ms. Snyder's already lived. I mean, I guess the veterans see all of the empathy, especially from us in the community. I feel like that what she said was where we're sitting. I just wanted to mention, I still ride around the community, especially District 5, just like others do. I'm just hoping that people in our community will stand up and try to claim that for the property, because it is dirty. There's a law, you go from one house to another, one that looks really great, the other next one looks terrible. I don't know what the answers are, but I'm hoping that some of us will speak about it, and maybe some people take pride in their property. I mean, that's the one thing we can do. But that's all I have. I appreciate it.
Glenn, you said they got a lawn cut, and we're gonna have to do it, they all ain't got nobody to do it with. It's not individual, individual contractors, but in the box, stuff like Ryan and Son, all we love about them, we need.
Yeah, we can contract that out.
Why don't you guys move on to the highway?
We can take into it. I mean, the cost is limited, it's gonna be more, that we basically pay for it, and if we didn't get money back... We can look at it.
And Betsy, well, that's the building on Main Street, they're already in and being right?
Yes.
So what are they waiting to be done?
Well, again, I'm not gonna go out and spend $40,000 here down the building, that's a real problem. I brought it back to y'all a year ago to ask you, and y'all never gave me the rest.
The one behind the three buildings that we have, that was, that was condemned in 2018?
If y'all tell me to go out and do it, I'll do it, but that's expensive.
Oh.
We still got that one on Hampton Street that we tore down two years ago that we never got any money back.
Well, see, that's where the other thing, where, put it on, that thing we got mine, and make places, or take the property?
Well, one we can't take the property to is put on the tax, as a tax limit. There, they didn't pay their taxes. It was sold at the tax sale. It was up for self-tax sale. Nobody called it because nobody wanted to spend the $40,000 for what they owe us, but the property...
Since they always owed us, while we didn't take control of the property.
Because legally, we can't do that. Now, I'm, once, once it turns over to the Orchard, Fortune, Fortune, how you pronounce that?
Fortune Land.
Fortune Land Commission, which is made up of three people, I think, in Dillon County. The treasurer, the assessor, and maybe the auditor. They determine what to do to that property. They may talk to them about them being to get back to us since we have that $40,000 link. All we get is property. We're not getting money back. The least we get is the property, because nobody's gonna tie that for that. And that goes back to, and I've had this conversation with the Community Alliance, love to tear it back. Again, there's two or three on Main Street that could run as upwards to $800,000, I was gonna pay for them. And not knowing that we're ever gonna be able to get that.
So I mean, so I mean, that they just end up with a...
Not really. But then, I'm not your legal counsel, so I can't answer that.
Well, the driving force has to be downtown is worth something.
That's correct.
And, and right now, it is very hard to make that safe. You know, how we make that worth something? We've put money in those buildings and...
Well, it's definitely all the stuff about society, and I remember the amount of money that I know we budgeted $24,000. We may have given out $4,000.
Right.
Yeah, in ten months. So again, people...
Probably is gonna take outside money, that, you know, comes down to it. Somebody's gotta seize the opportunity of doing something. Downtown's, you know, and that's not everybody, but, you know, a lot of downtown for outside. I mean, the Florence has worked on neighbors, but, you know, it's...
I mean, there's people that have bought this property right now, they're...
Have no intention of doing it, but...
Well... If they trade hands, obviously, if they're buying it, they have a purpose for it. I'm talking about a big person. But if a person that's owned the property for 25 or 30 years...
And they're willing to save it.
Well, that concerns me.
I mean, but there's nothing you and I, you know, with the government, we can't make somebody sell their property. We can't do that.
We can't set a standard... We can't set a standard that they have to take it up to, and then if they don't do it within a certain period of time.
Do what in a certain period of time?
Get it up to code.
We have that in place, but bottom line is, if you don't bring it up to code, you're either gonna tear it down, or we're gonna tear it down. So, I mean, that's a penalty. Am I correct, Ben?
Yes, that's one of them.
We don't have any rights legally from buildings connected from building to building to building. If the shape of one thing over and up, if one building is about to fall down and it brings the other two buildings into non-comformity to the, to that's one. We have no rights to that, right, Jack?
It may have to be a civil one. But the only thing we can do is, if one is in bad shape, we can mend it.
Well, it looks like we could have some type of ordinance in place. Since all these could build buildings, every one of them connected. I mean, it just, it boggles my mind.
We can have all the ordinances and laws you want. Bottom line is, can we afford to enforce a high tariff? That's your call.
But what I'm saying is you have a common law, just like I own a building... Just like I own a building, the next wall to the next building, we have a common wall between each other. So I'm connected to their property. Even though I own, own the property, I still have a common wall. Now, a person ought to have rights to that beyond their legal right of owning the property. Now, I just think, if we've got thirty-five buildings empty downtown, then we have, it looks like there'd be something we could work out with the community to figure out what we could do to get people these properties.
I don't have an answer yet. I mean, we, we've got a big town, and that is carrying the building down, but then again, if, if you guys tell me, we're going to go tear them down, and absorb the cost, we'll go tear them down, get them torn down, that's not an issue of getting them torn down, it's?
I've gone to other communities, like Trow, for instance. I go there and get big, couple life stands in there. They torn a lot, they torn a lot of their buildings down, and they use that space for the benefit of the community. But the point is, it destroyed your common wall concept between one building to the next, so they could put more heat on that one property on them than they did before. So it's worked out best for them in the long run. If you go there, it looks really good.
If, if the town or the building has the property on there, I would not?
No, I'd make the town, uh?
I would find out, I'll call my C of the, your ass.
Yeah, ask them. Because they're paved on the front side and the back sides. And they, they've torn buildings down, they have roads in between some, and then they have a fountain in some spaces, they have sitting areas in some spaces, they have murals to both sides. I mean, they've really got something going on good over there, I know it's a lot over and knock down, but?
Yeah, I have, and those issues?
We just need to make some plans that we got, like Dr. Wallace has told us before, we got six buildings downtown that need to come down. We need to decide what we're going to do with it. And it's coming to that.
How you want to pay for it?
That's a good question.
I mean, that's?
The person that owns it sure doesn't want to pay for it.
And we could, fine, I guess, but I'm, I'm going to do that for fine.
I think the solution is, if we get the four lane down to Long Branch, and somehow sell the downtown area in, in, as a whole, uh, as a, uh, a, uh, outlet mall in a hometown environment, where you might have, you know, Polo Shop, or a, you know, but you have to sell it as an outlet. Somebody with big money is, is going to have to?
Millions, not?
Huh? I said millions of dollars.
Right.
The point is, it's still, it's still a dry space. It, it's a shame we can't get groups like these thing, like?
Well, I don't know if we've been marketing. And if we had that four lane to Long Street, it's just a little stretch that people would see, that, you know, I, I guess that, that, that might be our first step, to get that four lane from Harley Bridge Road to Long Street, or, then maybe, uh, it would be working. Maybe that person that, uh, either hires should, uh, help market us for that.
And I think this thing, this, this committee you talked about, the little therapy, come back?
That is, you know, it, it is hard to have a half, a quarter of a million dollars in the building, and the next building, you know, have twenty thousand or thirty thousand, and I, I understand that. Um, and, and, and I, I think that we just need to be patient, because I think it's coming. I don't know that it's coming, it's been off this, you know, pandemic, we've got all this, you know, people want to go out deep, so nobody's going to build a restaurant, eat a restaurant. You go build a restaurant, now, you know, your lumber's four times what it was six months ago, or a year ago. So there are a lot of factors that are holding back, but, um, I still think that we've, we've kind of, uh, had some pre-emergent sprayed on our grass with the, uh, 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 you know, the, the, uh, in the porch. Uh, I think that probably potentially could still be a, a big growth factor for us, but, uh, we just, we just have to be ready. We have to do what we can do to be, do our part, make, and I was a little disappointed, I'm not getting on your birthday, I was a little disappointed that we didn't have fresh mulch in the beds when, when we had the downtown thing. Got most expensive, I don't know, where that, and it's still hanging, also.
If we can't hire it, we, we doing a lot of the good on the, I'm, you know, I'm not, you know?
And that's, that's, that's true everywhere. I mean, we've, we've had three or four positions open for six, can't do it, can't do it, I'm flying.
Anyway, Dave? No, you got those again?
No, I know.
Oh, yeah, nobody knows.
Bobby's done it.
I'm good. I'm good. All right.
Do we have a list of, of the, um, Cadence buildings aware that was prioritized, be torn down?
Yeah, we got that.
You know, instead of mulching these areas downtown, I've seen some other, people start using this chopped up bread. And I know it's, I know it's a lot more expensive, but if we're not watering it down, it's not going to make it feel? But it does look good, and it stays as permanent.
Anything else to come before council? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Don't, we got?